The City Council Ad-Hoc Committee on Subdivisions will now come to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Dionne?
Yeah.
Counselor Pato? Chair of Liberty Live.
Yeah. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Item one on our agenda is citizens' input. Madam Clerk, no citizens' input?
No, I have none.
Okay. And we just have to announce that this is meeting is being held virtually. Item two is a discussion, a review of the zoning rules and regulations for subdivisions. So this, just for the people watching, this committee came about last year was a resolution was put in. There were so many, in my mind, there were so many street acceptances coming before us of subdivisions that weren't completed. And then they wanted the city to complete the streets, paving or anything that that was supposed to be completed as per the subdivision that wasn't, and the builder was no longer responsive to that area. So they would come in front of us for subdivision, for street acceptance, which then means if we accept it, the city now has to take ownership of it. And oftentimes, it was an unfinished project. This came up in the issue of, really in Whitefield Street, which is just being paved now, going through the process of being paved now by the city, because the developer didn't finish that. And there is a list of streets that this has affected. So because of that, there was a lot of talk about what the mass general law is on subdivisions and perhaps changes at the state level. So I worked with Counselor Kadim on this last year, and we spoke to Representative Fiola multiple times. And she had said that any suggestions that we had were welcome to send to her. She will then send them to the representative's legal counsel and then submit it to, as a possible amendment, as they might see fit at the state level. So I have, and I know give to the clerk and the members of the committee, some proposed changes. And then, and we could go through those or, or anything else that you would like to do, Counselor, on this as well.
I think, um, just basically giving people an overview of what the suggestions are and what we feel are inadequate, explaining why and what it is that we're trying to do would be a good idea.
Yeah, okay. So we can go through these point by point. And if there's any others that we want to add in after it's in our committee, it will go to the council, could go today, could, could not go today. Representative's timeline is this Friday for her to submit to her legal counsel. That would be for a state change if we wanted to change it throughout the entire state. And I apologize, my dog is snoring next to me, if you can hear it. The other option would be a home loan petition. And then, in that case, it would just affect the city of Fall River. However, we're not the only people that have these same issues. So a change across the state would be my suggestion. Or we could put it up as a home loan petition, hold it anyway, to do an entire state change. So.
Well, I think I agree that if we could ultimately affect changes in mass general law, that would benefit the entire state and all communities. I think, you know, that, I, that would be my preference. I think using the home loan petition would be more of a, like a last effort just to try to better Fall River. But this would, this would, I mean, just be, you know, would definitely affect and be to the benefit of all communities. I think everybody across the state in some municipality or otherwise has been affected by these types of problems.
So you want to just go down the list, Counselor? Okay. So the first one, the issue was under the approval not required subdivisions. Currently, the subdivision control law allows for an unlimited number of new lots for development via the creation of frontage lots, so long as frontage and area requirements can be met with no notice to a butters being required, regardless of the number of new lots being created for development. A possible solution would be to require any approval not required subdivisions, creating more than a certain number of lots. And in this suggestion, it's more than three would be the proposal, for development to be reviewed as a definitive subdivision. So we have an amendment in here to line 15 to add the following language, provided that it's not more than three new lots for development are being created by such division. The intent on this would, any plan that creates four or more new lots for development would be defined as a subdivision and no longer be exempt from a plan review.
So, put this in layman's terms, to a, to a certain extent, um, I'm going to take a stab at it here, that essentially it's frontage and area requirements that determine whether something is or isn't a subdivision at this point. So basically, you can somewhat circumvent the subdivision process.
Yes, as long as they are meeting the frontage and area requirements, they, they can, it is a circumvention, yes.
So we would essentially be requesting that they change that to if somebody is going to develop four lots or more, it no, that, it no longer fits and is now considered a subdivision, so it has to go through a different process.
Correct, correct. Otherwise, the subdivision could be, you know, 12, 15, 20 lots, as long as they are meeting the frontage and area requirements, they would, as it is now, they do not need a plan review, definitive plan review.
Yeah, because as it stands now, there's been many developments that have been put in. And because of the, of the lack of requirement, I guess you'd call it, lack of review, input, and notice to a butters has caused serious ramifications in, in many subdivisions in the past. So that we would try, be averting this in the future.
We would, anything that was four lots or more. So then the purpose, as it's outlined, would be to allow the planning board the review and input with regard to our public services, infrastructure, stormwater drainage, where four or more new lots for development are being created by a plan, and also notice to a butters.
Okay, I think that's, I think that's a great start and something that's very important that we should.
And are you, um, are you okay with that number anymore, four or more lots?
Um, I mean, ideally, in an ideal world, you'd love it to be for every lot. But yeah, you know, I guess there's, I guess there is a line to be drawn. I mean, they do have to, anybody who wants to build a structure has to go before the planning board prior to that to get some form of approval.
They still have to go through the building department, building permits, things like that.
This just makes it, this, this just downsizes what's considered to be a subdivision and, um, and makes it a more difficult, I don't know if to say if it's more difficult, but a better defined process.
Yes, but in, more importantly, I think it allows the city's input on drainage and infrastructure, public services, where we, where it's, we don't currently have that.
Right.
As long as we're meeting those requirements, we don't currently have that.
And in this situation, and in this case, a situation like Whitefield Street or some others would not have happened, perhaps.
So I'm not sure if they met the frontage and, and area requirements, or if they went for any kind of variances on that subdivision. So I'm not sure in particular if, if this example works for, as an example, for Whitefield Street, only because I don't know their frontage and area requirements, if those were met, or if they went for variances.
How do you feel about that number?
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that number. I think it's a good, I think it's a good cutoff. Your volume is going out, Counselor.
Oh, sorry, is that better?
Yes.
All right. So yeah, I mean, I, I think that's a definite step in the right direction. I think that's a very positive step to take. So I would be good with that first one.
Okay, as is. Okay. So the second one, as it reads, I'm actually going to have an amendment to this one. So the issue is that a planning board only has 21 days to review plans despite the fact that the planning board may only meet once a month. So in, in our city, for example, they meet once a month. A possible solution would be to provide for a minimum 30-day review period for anybody that was proposing new lots for development. However, in going through my calendar, I was looking at, I think it was looking at just January as an example. If, if, you know, most meetings are on the first Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday or whatever the day may be, and it stays that way for every month. So if, if, if our planning board, say, was to be on the first Wednesday of the month, which would be the sixth, and then they don't meet again until, wait a minute, does that work? Hold on, there was one, maybe it wasn't that month that I looked at. There are months that have extra weeks, and I feel like that 30 days isn't going to be enough.
Right, on your five-week months, if there's five Wednesdays in a month.
Right.
By the time you, they meet on the subsequent month, you're going to be in your six, you're past the 30 days, because you're into a, yes, a sixth week. So.
My suggestion on that one would, would be to change it to 40 days, just so that in those instances, that doesn't happen. The purpose here, it said, so if a planning board only conducts meetings once, once a month, a plan could be filed immediately after the board's meeting, the very next day, and then there, the timeline would expire before they met again. So this would, this would alleviate that.
Right, because right now, mass general law, as it exists, allows for review and action by the planning board to be circumvented.
Right. And if there is no action, because there is no meeting, and they'd have to be calling for special meetings to meet this deadline. I'm not sure.
It's an automatic approval.
Yes, it's a lack of action, yes.
So let me ask a question. So if you stayed with the 30-day timeline and had an exception, except in the event of a month containing five weeks would be the exception, it would bump it off, you know, it would extend it automatically another week? Or do you feel better with the 40-day? I don't care either way.
So part of me doesn't like the 40-days, because, you know, we don't necessarily want to hold up development. We, and we don't want to hold up good development. But we also don't want to have an approval just by a lack of action. So if there's a way that that can be done, with that, with what you're saying, the amendment, if it's, if it's the fifth week, then it, it goes out a certain number of days. I didn't have time to go through the calendar to count each month to see, you know, where that might take place. The other issue is during the months when we have holidays, if their meetings get bumped forward or back, or they get bumped altogether that month, especially around November or December, I would be mindful of those dates as well. I mean, we could do 30-days and then, and have an exception in there?
Yeah, because at least that way, you would keep your, your shorter timeline, but still incorporate the, the exceptions.
Right. Um, I was also thinking we could do something along the lines of, upon the next regular meeting, regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board. The only issue with that is if it was submitted just before the meeting, and there wasn't time for them to add it to the agenda or review it, there would be an issue that way. Then they would have met that criteria, but it wouldn't be long enough for the next, for the next meeting after that.
Yeah, so I guess you have to do, you have to have some form of timeline.
Right. I would suggest we put it in for the 40-days at now, and then we can always discuss it in full council, if there's maybe a better way, or if that would work. We can kind of go through my calendar between now and then and see what those, what those days might be. It just depends what day of the month the planning board meets.
Right, right. Well, there's no doubt at some point that there is going to be an interruption, or there is going to be, something is going to fall through the cracks with that timeline. So, yeah, we could do, I would agree, yeah, send it with the 40-days and then let it be streamlined, or if somebody can come up with language that, that suits the ultimate goal, then at that point, we'll take action on it.
Language for an automatic extension of the timeline, if we moved it to.
In the event of a holiday or a month with, you know, a five-week month, or anything that, that would interrupt the 30-day timeline.
Yeah, so it might be also if it, you know, if the planning board is to meet and they have members that are absent and they don't have a quorum and they're not able to meet, it would bump it off as well. So there's got to be something in there. If we keep it at 30, there's got to be something in there for some type of an automatic extension.
Right, right. Okay, I'm sure, I'm sure we can come up with some type of language. But yeah, I think, I agree, you're better to go the extra days, have the 40-days, and then modify, rather than not consider that aspect of it and, and try to change things after the fact.
Do you want to, do you want to just change it now to 40?
Sure.
So, Madam Clerk, on this, we would want to change within 21 days to 40.
Okay. I have that noted.
Thank you. We, are you good with that one, Counselor?
I am, I am. So, go ahead. Nope, go ahead.
So the next one is the preliminary subdivisions. Preliminary plan submission is not mandatory regardless of the number of lots proposed to be created. Requiring preliminary subdivision plan review for larger subdivisions would allow for early identifications of issues or concerns that would be addressed at the definitive stage. So in this one, let's see, it would be amended. In the case of a subdivision, subdivision showing nine lots or less in a residential zone, any person before submitting their definitive plan may submit to the planning board a preliminary plan. And in paragraph two, in the case of our not residential subdivision or subdivision showing 10 or more lots in a residential zone, any person before submitting their definitive plan shall submit to the planning board a preliminary plan. A preview of the plan, that way they, on bigger lots, so if there is an issue that arises, they can address it earlier rather than later.
Right, plus I think sometimes people have felt that because there wasn't a preliminary plan, they didn't have the option of, um, you know, they had to wait till the definitive plan was done, everything is already in place, things are going to stop being built, and it's too late to backpedal and change things. Where if, where if there's a preliminary plan, these issues can be addressed. If people have concerns, they can address, they can talk about their concerns. The only problem I have with this one is, in the case of non-residential subdivisions, it's a shall submit a preliminary. But in the residential of nine lots or less, if you're, so if you're going to, if you're going to build a resident, if your development's going to be residential within a residential zone, I guess, it's may submit. Well, if it's may submit, that, that, that isn't shall submit. So could, so would, could that, you know, could we end up having the same problem? Because it, it isn't a requirement, really.
So, um, in this one, that, that's just the number, the cutoff number. So if you wanted to do it less than that, to make it, that they have to put in for a, that they have to put in a preliminary plan, we can certainly change the number. This was, right now, there is no number. So it would be 10 or more lots residential, shall submit it, nine or less, they can, or they, they don't have to. We could change that number if you, if you think that number is too high.
No, I don't think that's my issue. I think my issue is there's a differentiation between non-residential and residential. That's fine. In the non-residential of 10 or more, they're saying shall submit. So there's no option not to submit a preliminary plan.
Right.
In the, in the case of the residential, they're giving an option by saying may submit the plan.
In the residential, nine or less. But in paragraph two, if it's 10 or more in a residential, then they also shall.
That one says non-residential.
Right, but keep reading, or a subdivision showing 10 or more lots in a residential zone.
Okay, I'm sorry, I see. All right, that's, I thought, I knew I was having to disconnect somewhere.
So we just made it, you know, we drew a line on the number, and, and if it's 10 or more, then they, they have to.
Um, I don't know, I think, um, I think if somebody's going to build less than 10 homes in a residential area, I think, again, I think people should know those plans in advance. Otherwise, we are back in the same situation where everything's already in place, because they didn't have to address it.
What would your suggestion be on that cutoff? And I mean, I think it's, it, I don't think that it's fair either that to assume, and I'm not saying this to you, but to a builder to assume just because they're submitting their definitive plan, that it is what it is, and that's that. There should still be room for changes. I think this just allows us to identify those from a city perspective earlier. And it also adds in, oh no, that's the next one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how I would, um.
If you, if you go under the purpose, it says it allows for the planning board input and identification of concerns, issues, and informational needs with regard to a potential subdivision or 10 or more lots at an early stage in the development process, and before significant engineering development costs are incurred by requiring this, the submission of a preliminary plan. So, you know, before a developer goes any further, it gives the planning board time to identify any issues that they might have, to change it before they, you know, go to a definitive plan.
But again, we're talking 10 lots or more. So anything under 10, there's no requirement.
Correct, and we could change that.
Yeah, I, I think I would feel more comfortable if that number was lower. I don't know, you know, what I consider, I mean, should we be consistent and, you know, and just continue with the, with the four-lot number? Or, um, or, I mean, even, I don't know, I just don't feel comfortable with, somebody can put up to nine lots without that preliminary report or plan, because that's a significant number of homes or whatever being built.
It is, I agree with you.
So, or maybe we leave that up to a discussion in council too, as to what, you know, the, the council is comfortable with in terms of numbers. I just feel like not, under 10 is not enough, is not low enough. I think it should be lower.
Okay, I would, I would suggest changing it now.
Okay. Because it's just interesting, one paragraph, it says nine lots or less, and then the next one is 10 lots or more.
Right, so, so nine lots or less, they still can submit if they want to, but they don't have to. I mean, I.
I mean, do you have objection to making it a requirement in either case?
So every, and, and any subdivision would need a preliminary plan review?
Essentially, I guess that's what I'm saying.
So I, I don't have an objection to that. I'm guessing that there is a reason that they don't currently. What that reason is, I don't know. But we could certainly put that up for discussion.
Yeah, because I just feel like where it was broken out in two different paragraphs, it was broken out, and the language was somewhat similar, but yet different in both paragraphs, that it is two different issues to a certain extent.
Well, depending on where it is, if it's in a non-residential or residential.
Residential, right. Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, for me, I, I would prefer to see shall submit versus may submit, but in both.
So we'd be editing both.
Well, the one about, the one with the under 10 in, in non-residential says shall submit. In the first paragraph, unless than nine states may submit.
Right.
So for me, I would want to see shall submit in both circumstances. I guess that's, that's my.
So this one would be, you would want a preliminary plan regardless of, of the number of lots.
Correct.
Preliminary plan for all subdivisions.
Correct.
Okay.
Because again, how does anybody address it, especially in a butter? And well, in the zoning board, in the planning board, anybody that has to give any approvals also.
Right. Okay. All right, so we can, we can put that in front of the council to change that to preliminary plan for all subdivisions. And at that time, there might be talk of what our site plan review is on subdivisions currently. It might address some of that, but let's, let's, we'll talk about amending that on the council floor, if I.
That's fine.
So you're going to leave this, if I may?
Madam.
You're going to leave this as is in your draft here?
Leave it as is. I'm going to pull up the section of mass general law to see how it's divided before the council meeting. So you can leave it as is for now, Madam Clerk?
I will not make any changes, thank you.
All right, and then we can see what that mass general law says, Counselor, and see how that might need to be changed for all, if that's.
Yep.
Okay. Let's see. The next issue on this one is there is currently no requirement for notice to a butters of a planning board's review of a preliminary plan, which is something we always hear from a butters, asking all kinds of questions because they are not aware, they know, they know something's going on, but they don't have all of the details, or they haven't received anything. So we would add the following language. A planning board shall require, request evidence of the same that an applicant, at the applicant's expense, provide and has provided notice of the date, time, and place, and specifics of the plan to be considered of a preliminary subdivision submission to all abutting property owners within 300 feet of the property shown on the preliminary plan submission by registered mail return receipt requested. So the intent of this would be to notify the butters within 300 feet of a property that is subject to a preliminary plan for planning board review. And the purpose allows for a butter input and identifications of concerns, issues, and informational needs with regard to a potential subdivision at an early stage in the development process and before significant engineering development costs are incurred by requiring the submission of preliminary plan. So this is the same thing as above, where we want the planning board to be able to provide input early on. It's the same thing with the butters being able to provide input early on.
I.
I think it is, it's the right thing to do, it's the fair thing to do. We had this issue on Brighton Avenue with the convenience store gas station that was going in with all of the houses behind it. And, you know, all of the neighbors wanted a chance to speak and have their questions answered and, and so forth. And, you know, this would alleviate that at the end stage.
Yeah, because really, the effect, um, you know, the effect on the quality of life and the impact, and like, you know, and the impacts, but is, should be a priority. And a lot of times, these, if these, you know, potential impacts can be addressed in advance, one side can satisfy the other side, or they can come to some common ground or agreement and then move forward with the project anyways.
I agree.
I think people just, and walk away with better taste in their mouth if, if they're involved and don't feel like it was snuck in on them. And I think sometime, very often, that's what they feel.
Yeah, I agree. All right, so we'll leave that as, as is? Counselor, you can leave that one as is?
Yes.
Okay, so the next, the next one is definitive subdivision. For discussion of potential amendments, the issue, so this is the surety provisions. They don't allow for adequate input as to the appropriate form of surety, and it's prone to abuse. It is difficult for communities to compel completion of incomplete developments. The use of covenants as currently provided for and described in the general laws fails to adequately ensure the completion of public improvements or provide clear direction as to when a planning board should undertake completion of a developer's commitments. So the amendment proposed, before endorsement of its approved plan, a planning board shall require the construction of ways and installation of municipal services be secured by one or in part by one, by another of the methods described in the following clauses, and which method or combination of methods may be selected and specifically approved by the planning board, and from time to time may be proposed to be varied or changed by applicant. and from time to time may be proposed to be varied or changed by applicant, by covenant duly recorded by the owner of record running with the land and including all parcels provided for development as approved by the definitive plan. And these are just the changes from the date of such deed, partial covenants over individual lots should not be permitted." So the intent on this is to allow for the planning board to choose the form of surety, to secure the improvements approved as part of a definitive subdivision, and specifically eliminate partial covenants. And the, the purpose would be to strengthen the position of the cities and towns and the approval, in the approval of the surety for public improvements, and provide for additional penalties or avenues of redress where developers fail to complete and more accurately reflect the cost that would be incurred by the municipality to complete a, a development. So what we have is, um, right now for sureties, i- in some cases, they've been a lot. So, um, the developer will, will put a lot up as their surety. Well, often it's the smallest, um, lot, or it's a, a non-buildable lot, which really doesn't, um, grant the city any, any form of, um, negotiating, which we shouldn't have to negotiate, and it's probably not the correct word, but leverage for, to have the builder complete their, um, their work. So the city, where the city is then left with an unbuildable lot and a subdivision that's not completed. And it's usually the last step, which is the roads. So, i- in this, it would be just to strengthen the, the position of the cities. And if they do at that point walk away and fail to finish their development in any way, shape or form, it would more reflect the cost of what it's gonna cost the city to do that complete work. So when we go to accept a street that, um, you know, Frederick Street, Whitefield Street, any of those streets that weren't finished by a developer, you know, we're doing so at a significant cost for a developer that, uh, left their project unfinished and now has gone on in a, um, different LLC to do another project and possibly do the same. We've had this happen multiple times.
Yeah, and, and, you know, the developer is in business to make money, not lose money. Um, and in these situations, by not completing, um, you know, they've made a commitment to do this, but then they walk away from their commitment with no ramifications, um, which obviously puts more money in their pockets, and then it costs the taxpayers, because these people shirk their responsibilities. And as you say, most of the time, uh, the city ends up with possession of the least valuable and most problematic lot. And, and, and it's never equitable, and, and, and it only costs the city, so...
Right.
Yeah, whatever can be done, um, I mean, I don't know in what, what form of surety, but, um, you know, I, I suppose if their feet are held to the fire and the surety that's necessary to make sure the city doesn't lose, would almost force them to complete the work because ultimately, we're looking for them to pay either way.
Correct, and this would give us leverage. Having an unbuildable lot, or the smallest lot, or the, um, least valuable piece of land does not help the city, um, in the way that it needs to.
No, it actually takes away the one headache that the developer probably has.
Yeah. So, uh, the developer gets a, a pretty good deal there, and, and the planning board, you know, might have different forms of, of surety, and, and this would give them, allow them to use, you know, one or a variety of methods or a combination of methods.
No, I'm good with that.
Okay.
I think that's something that definitely should be, uh...
Okay, so, and then there's a second amendment to this. Adding the followed language to the end of the first sentence at the end of the paragraph, "Be necessary to complete the work, including the prevailing wage cost of labor that would be incurred by the city or town to do so. Such amount or amounts were committed to be completed. However, in no way shall the approval of a definitive plan or reduction of the penal sum held in surety be deemed to constitute the laying out or acceptance of any roadway or improvement thus proposed." The intent would be to require the inclusion of the prevailing wage costs that it would cost the city, cause when we do it ourselves, we now have to, um, use prevailing wage to construct your cost estimates and clarifying that the planning board does not hold the authority to lay out or accept a pro, proposed road as a public way. The purpose would be to strengthen the position of cities and towns and the approval of surety for public improvements, and provide for additional penalties or avenues of redress where the developer fails to complete and more accurately reflects the cost that would be incurred by the municipality to complete the development.
I agree a hundred percent, I think it's, it's, it's only fair, you know, you, you, you wanna build a development, you've made a commitment, uh, you know there's a, a, a cost involved, and then you should, and they should have to, they should just have to meet the requirements, period. And somebody, nobody else should be left, uh, holding the bag or, uh, living with the consequences if they don't.
Right, well, and that, right, or, so the people, that the folks that have bought homes in those areas are now left with, um, what was promised to them, not being promised to them. And then because it's a public road, I mean, it's private road until it's accepted, but in their minds, they're living on a public road that's not being taken care of, and their immediate call is to the city to have it addressed. Okay, so we'll leave that one as is as well. Uh, let's see. Processed.
The next one is the homeowners association?
Yeah, so this is one I, I had, um, possible change to. "The process of notification of residents of homeowners associations, which they are required to be a part of in order to maintain open space or common infrastructure, does not appear to currently be provided for within the general law language." Let's see, so the amendment proposed would be if a subdivision has been made in a city or town while the subdivision control law is in effect, in such city or town and the planning board has endorsed a plan showing the subdivision or the subdivision has otherwise been recorded due to the planning board's failure to act, and where ownership of any or all lots shown on such plan are subject to easements, declarations of other legal encumbrances, such as legal restrictions and obligations related to the homeowners associations, draining easements, recreational amenities or other legally granted or placed easements, restrictions or obligations. "And the person who made the subdivision or any successor in interest with notice, actual or record of such legally recorded easements, restrictions or obligations, shall inform any successors to their interests to any lot shown on such approved subdivision plan of such easements, restrictions or obligations. The details related thereto and a copy of the document from which such easements, restrictions or obligations originate no later than the execution of the final deed transferring ownership from the person making the subdivision or the successor in interest and the successor interest to whom the deed is being granted." So the intent here is to codify a requirement that developers and property sellers inform purchases of property with, within a definitive subdivision having a homeowners associations of the presence, details and obligations. It goes on, but essentially, we can use, um, in my mind, we can use Whitefield Street as a prime example of this. However, they don't have a homeowners association, so, um...
This would be more in the case of some cul-de-sacs, would that be correct?
Not necessarily, so they need to have a sub, uh, they need to have a homeowners association for this to, um, take effect, however, if they don't have a homeowners association, it's still, so in the example of Whitefield Street, there is a twenty-foot buffer at the back of each of those yards on the right-hand side. So, anybody purchasing a property, um, what this would do if they have a homeowners association, it would require that anybody purchasing a property is given all the information about whatever that easement might be. And it, I mean, it could be anything, in this case of Whitefield Street, it's for drainage. But there are people that are buying homes on that street, one in particular bought it for sale by owner and wasn't aware of that, and now she has a completely flooded yard. And has had for some time. So, in this, it makes it, um, a requirement that they inform the purchasers, um, having a homeowner association. I'm not sure that this is going to, I agree, but I think...
Yeah, I see where you're going with this, um, I didn't mean to interrupt you, go ahead.
No, just leave, so it's great if they have a homeowners association, if they don't have a homeowners association, that requirement's not there. And I don't know of, most of the ones that we've had in, in front of us as that have an issue, I don't believe they have homeowners associations.
I don't think so. Um, so maybe this could also be modified to a certain extent, um, because basically, well, what you're looking for with this is more transparency, not requiring anybody who's purchasing a property to have to do research to see if there's easements or any problems or issues. And in the, uh, in the, the, with Whitefield Street, they have the swales, which, from what I understand, I don't know if it's in the deed or, or how it's, or where, where the requirement i- is recorded, but they are supposed to maintain those swales, not the city, the person who owns the property.
Correct.
But not all people realize that.
No, because...
So basically, what we're looking at is whether it's a homeowners association or not, if there's an easement or a requirement, that, that should be upfront and, and in the transfer of property, that person should, either in writing or somehow, know that they have an obligation.
Right, so, cause now, um, if you're in purchase of property, the, you know, the, you're under agreement, the, say the seller doesn't mention it, um, for whatever reason. They just maybe don't even think that it's an important thing that they need to mention. Um, or they mentioned it in passing, but it wasn't, um, with any definitive backup information or, or documents, or the home is in foreclosure, so the bank owns it, so it's as-is, buyer's own, you know, diligence. In any of those cases, they wouldn't, the, the, your lender is going to be doing your mortgage process, the closing attorney is going to be doing the transfer of the deed. And unless the closing attorney brings it to, uh, the buyer's attention, then they're not gonna have, they're not gonna know, or, they might know, but they might not know to the extent that they need to know about that particular, um, easement.
Though, I mean, there are other situations, um, that exist now that, you know, uh, that when somebody sells a house, like for instance, and I don't know why this one pops in my head, but, um, let's say somebody had an oil, uh, uh, an oil tank that leaked. You're supposed to, e- each person is supposed to let the, the new purchaser know that at some point in time that happened, whether, you know, that it may have been corrected or whatever, but you're, that's still supposed to go forward with the property.
Right.
So wouldn't, so this could potentially fall into that same, um, situation where, where, you know, you have a list of, um, a list of items that you have to disclose. Maybe people would have to sign off on it, I don't know.
In that case, that's just a single, are you talking about just a single house sale? This would be just addressing it if it was an easement throughout a subdivision?
So, maybe, it should, yeah, okay, so maybe, so it would be required either way then?
Yeah, so if you're selling a single house, um, this is just addressing it if there is a, an easement, um, or...
Swales.
A restriction or anything like that in a, in a subdivision. But I, I agree with you that, um, whether they have a homeowners association or not, cause not everyone does, I don't believe Whitefield Street does.
Right, right.
There's nothing in there that would point this out to them.
So if this, so if this modification went through as written, it's only addressing homeowners associations. It's not addressing a place like Whitefield Street.
Right, so I think it needs to be, and I'm not sure what the language is, we could talk about that at the meeting, but whether it's a homeowner's, whether they have a homeowners association or not.
Right, right.
If there's any restriction, um, in there, then it, it needs to be, um, required.
Restriction or obligation, cause I guess maintaining those swales is an obligation.
Correct.
Mm-hmm, okay, so yes, I agree, we should look for that somehow.
Okay, um, okay. So we're good with that one, and we possibly change it to whether it's a homeowners association or not? I'll, I'll pull up the MGL on that one.
All right, um, if I may, are you making any changes to this now or no?
Um, we can wait till the, um, full meeting and, um, say what our edit might be. I just wanna pull up the Master General Law on that one.
So I have no edits for this at this time?
No, um...
Okay.
I just wanna make sure that this one isn't just specific to homeowners associations before we make a change to it.
Okay.
Okay. That the law itself, Counselor, is what I meant. So, the purpose of this, which we talked about, would be to facilitate notification to the purchases of properties within approved definitive subdivisions of the presence of and obligations related to homeowners associations. So if this is just, if that MGL, I'll have to go back and look, is just referring to homeowners associations, then it would stay as is, but if it's not, then, um, we need to find it, and we would need to find another, um, means to make sure that they're not, if it's not a subdivision, they're also notified.
So we would be potentially looking for a modification in the circumstance that it's not a homeowners association?
Yeah, mm-hmm. I'm gonna write that down, cause that's good language. Okay. Um, and then other considerations that are outside the subdivision control law. And there's two here, so, um, the first one is inclusionary zoning to require the destruction of affordable units or payments in lieu of, as part of any definitiv- subdivision required. So that, the, a builder at that point would either have to, um, have affordable units in their subdivision or, or payment in lieu of, um, is one thing for them to consider, it's not under subdivision control law. And the second one, and I think this is where we, uh, in the city have our biggest issue, is, well, it doesn't necessarily pertain to the subdivision control law, the legislator, legislature should strongly consider delegating more authority to communities to allow for the denial of projects based on an individual's involvement in an, another LLC that has not complied with the subdivision plans as approved by the planning board or finished subdivision projects to the satisfaction of the community. "It is difficult for communities to compel completion of incomplete developments. Too often subdivisions are not completed and contractors file bankruptcy under one LLC just to create another LLC for a new subdivision project, which in turn leads to more uncompleted projects. This impacts the community's ability to officially accept roadways and to maintain the infrastructure in developments." This we see, um, a lot here in the city, where they leave their subdivision, um, incomplete. They file for bankruptcy, they leave that as is, they open up a new LLC, they make plans for a new subdivision, they bring it before, um, the planning board, and we don't have the, um, the ability to deny a new LLC based on the performance of a past one, even though it's the same builder. It absolutely makes no sense to me, um, that we wouldn't have the ability to do that. And we'll, we could have one builder, and, and we get asked this all the time, and I ask it, cause I said it doesn't make sense to me, how is a builder allowed to, um, leave unfinished subdivisions and continue to make, get approvals to do more? And the answer is, is that we currently, the planning board does not have the ability to deny them right now if it's a new LLC.
And I think out of all of these, this is probably, should be the number one concern.
Go to.
And, and this goes back to my comment about how these developers can go on, and there's, there are no ramifications for them.
Correct. And I think if, if some of the subdivision control law was tightened up, if we had proper sureties, um, or leverage to enforce them, they would be more inclined to finish their projects. And if they weren't inclined to finish their projects, at least the city would have the proper funding to be able to, to finish it in case that they didn't. However, uh, we don't wanna be in the habit of having to do that either, cause it's using our, our city resources, which could be, you know, working elsewhere, not in a, in a subdivision that wasn't finished, whether we have the, um, the, um, appropriate surety or not.
Well, this would definitely give added teeth to the whole situation, because, I mean, if they knew, that they could walk, if they walked away and try, you know, and used the bankruptcy route and, and tried to do, you know, establish another LLC, that they weren't gonna have any more work, they weren't gonna be able to create any more subdivisions, well, that, you know, I'm sure there's always ways to circumvent, but at least, at least, uh, I don't know... I don't know. At least it would be something.
At least we'd be able to legally deny them if, if that was changed.
Right.
But we don't, the planning board does not have the ability to do that now. And if some of these other amendments are taken into consideration and implemented, then you know, would strengthen the city's position and in walking away from a project might not be financially worthwhile for a developer to do that anymore because they do now have more money on the line if they are to walk away from the project.
Yeah, they have more money on the line and they have consequences also. So yeah, I definitely agree that this, that, and this in itself could make a huge difference and we wouldn't have these disasters.
Right. Well, this one and the surety, I think, are the most important. In the situations that we've been. Okay. Do you have anything further, Counselor?
I don't think so. I think this certainly covers a lot. It's pretty extensive. I don't think it really missed anything.
I'm going to go back before our meeting and, and look at the MGL for the, the one that is specific to the homeowners associations. So we can make sure that they are notified in either case and, and what that wording might be. And other than that, Madam Clerk, you have the, the edit. Did we only give you one edit, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I only have one edit. That would be to change 30 days on page two of your draft to 40 days.
Okay. And then we have some things we might pull up on the council floor that we talked about at this meeting. So in this case, Madam Clerk, would there be a motion to send this to full council?
If that is your intention, if you wanted to send this in the form of a letter to the council, we would need a motion.
Okay.
I would make that motion to send this to full council.
Now, second that. Roll call.
Okay, so to send this draft with the one edit changing on page two, 30 days to 40 days.
Yes.
To send it to the full council for their review tonight. Counselor Dion?
Yes.
Counselor Ponte? Counselor Chael Libby-Lobo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. And we have no further business before us. We have a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. I second that. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
On motion to adjourn, Counselor Dion?
Yes.
Counselor Ponte? Chael Libby-Lobo?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.